Welcome everyone to our May 11th board workshop here. Uh, we'll go ahead and get started with our pledge of allegiance. If uh Jennifer, if you want to get us.
Sure, if I can get everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you being here. Dr. Condon, if you want to get us started, or do we just go right to Mike Romey from here?
No, actually, I'll go ahead and get us started. As you know, we've been working with some of our consultants to develop a conceptual drawing of what our elementary school may look like. I have included Dr. Ehrlich in that work. He's been involved and has provided input and insight. Dr. Pinter had involved, Ginger had involved, Cindy Nelson and Dr. Bailey and Mike Romey as well. And then the last two meetings are our president and vice president were able to join us to be in the loop to see what was going on and just take a look at the design of the work we were doing. So um at this time, I'm going to let Mike Romey introduce centers today. Mike?
Thank you. From Bond Architects, we have Art Bond and Jennifer Carlson. And then from Navigate Building Solutions, we have Craig Sluter, Corey Baxter-Mueller and Joe Switzer. And um both of these consulting firms were approved in March at ninth Board of Education meeting. We did go through a process, the the process of selecting architects what started in the fall of 2018 when we were with our facility master plan study. So we issue architectural firms to serve as architects for the school. Just to a three year, it was really a three year commitment to these firms. Um, and then this past spring, we went through an interview process and reference check and selected Art Bond or Bond Architects to serve as the architectural firm for the new elementary school. And then with Navigate Building Solutions, we issued an art and janitor anywhere rep for our construction services. We also went through an interview process and reference check and then made a recommendation and the board approved Navigate Building Solutions on March 9. So I'd like to turn it over to Art Bond and Jennifer Carlson.
Mike, um, what I'd like to, if you don't mind, is just to give you a brief overview of our background and kind of in reference to our school. Now that kind of leads into the worthy steering committee to get to where we are with the conceptual diagram presented tonight. First of all, of all, I wanted to mention Bond Architects has been doing work in local school districts for over 28 years. About 80% of our work is K through 12 education. And we've been working in districts, neighboring districts like Maplewood, University City, Ladue, Pattonville Parkway, Hazelwood, among a number of others. We've been in over 28 districts. Only 126 schools in the eastern part of Missouri. Some of the aspects that we really have brought to focus are our base initiative, which is back in 2015, 2016. We took a step back from the work we were doing and quite thorough investigative analysis of what around the country to keep the, to keep schools safer. This was coming at a time when there'd been a number of incidents in schools and we what we can do to really follow best practices in making schools as safe as they possibly can be. And I have to tell you that there are a number of things that came out of that. But first and foremost, and this is something really take to heart is schools have to be inspirational learning environments. And that is the first that is an overlay in the insecurity that gets put in place in the schools. Because the inspirational learning environment, you've really lower of what education is all about. The safety overlay that we put into place in schools is really second should be unnoticed as one walks through a school and is through. There are a number of barricades that one would hit if you didn't have proper access. But it shouldn't be something that you that that the student encounter in day to day activities. And so that's something that we'll, we'll touch on as we look at how anticipate the new elementary school being laid out. And the approach is one, a series of zone at the school environment, the from the perimeter, working as well access points as you enter the school. You work your way through and ultimately to the classrooms, which in the end are kind of the final safe for students. But we'll, we'll get into a little bit greater detail and talk about the conceptual layout that we're going to discuss tonight. I also wanted to reiterate that these are very conceptual thoughts. And we're hearing committee since early March, as Mike mentioned. And that there are a lot of decisions that are yet to be made after the run is approved. And I think that what you're going to see tonight is kind of a first shock that what you really, we're going to see different of that that need to be really and identified and and further, we'll, we'll point those out along the way. But we envision that going forward, there are going to be a number of meetings with residents, friends and students, teachers and staff at multiple level. Want anybody to think that this, but it it from which we can really start the dialogue. Um, I think it's also showing that what our priority is, we look at the site and we say, okay, here's a a fairly green open site are the priorities that we're keeping forefront as we move forward. Those would be to be good neighbors. We want to screen the charities as much as possible from light and sound and connection to the school. We're interested in minimizing the amount of grading. There's a lot of topography to the site, and I think that it all really works nicely. It's it's a really, and as such, we will be very cognizant of the way that the contours in the site occur figure and try to keep those intact as possible. We also are interested in saving as much of the vegetation that's out there. We know that there are trails and aspects to that that district has gotten into and maintained over the years. And we think it would be very beneficial to bring those into play into the site. Almost as being a school, they're such a great setting with these 13 acres that the way in which we can design the building to make best that kind of woodland area is really play off of that as much as possible. And then the idea of potentially having the class have a feel in sort of a treehouse, being in the canopy as it surrounds the southern end of the site could be an interesting idea to work with going forward. So with that, Jen, if you would bring up the the first vignette. And I would have a question as along the way, please. I I think sometimes the question loses its benefit if it's held to the end. So we would ask you to jump in at any point. Now, the first vignette here is kind of approaching the new elementary from the the Doherty Ferry Road approach. And you've kind of come into the site and you've stepped beyond the parking lot sits in front of the building. But you've approached the overlaying canopy for the drop off at the front of the school. And we envision a sort of still wooded, using a number of the trees that are out there, but also planting quite a few new with rain gardens at the front of the building, which are kind of low vegetation, but they can be used for study and and a number of projects for the students to interact as well. The building will have, we envision kind of a or an organic feel, low predominantly one story. It may get a little bit higher toward the gymnasium and cafeteria and on the far left side of the site. But we envision the materials being fairly organic, stone, wood, masonry, some fairly natural looking materials, albeit them as as durable as we can possibly use for maintenance of the of the facility. But the front door would have very much of a of a hierarchy and delineation that this really is the front of the building. And upon entering on the right hand side here, you're looking at the administrative suite, which has strong visual command over the site and can see any vehicles or pedestrians approaching from the Doherty Ferry entrance and exit. And so that's sort of the overall commanding view of the site and then coming in under the canopy into the single story element that then kind of on the back end of the site sort of steps off into two stories. But you're coming in on the upper level when you enter from ground plane on the north side of the building. As we kind of rotate the view to the southern part of the of the focus here, you see that east west wing at the top corner that is kind of a connecting spine and you see a hint of the the entry that we were standing in front of before. And but then it carries through to the academic wings and you've passed through that kind of connecting spine, if you will, that runs kind of diagonally east to west. But then you've entered into the academic wings, which are these fingers that come off of the back of the building, the south side, and they step down. So you're coming in and actually entering on the second floor of these spines, the academic wings with then they step down in several instances to one story on the easterly wings. And that's kind of how they terrace down and basically make best use of the topography and really kind of keep the buildings fairly low and keep them as much out of view of the adjacent neighbor neighbors, although they're heavily buffered by the existing wooded edge down along the lower area, which is uncolored, kind of that that white edge down below. Jen, if you zoom in just a little bit, wanted to touch base on the rationale for using these wings allows you to get a lot of natural light into every classroom. And the classrooms will really kind of focus to the exterior, both to the south and to the intervening natural kind of courtyards in between. And we envision that those as being very rich areas that are connected directly to the classrooms. There might be vegetated gardens. There would be outdoor classrooms, sort of an amphitheater shown down below in this circular portion. There could be smaller play areas up in the upper right hand corner. Now, you'll notice when we get to the site plan, things like this playground move around. They're shown in different locations. And that is to kind of really illustrate to you that there's a lot further study to come and that these are sort of the the components that we envision in the site. We don't know the best location as yet. But it's to give you more of a flavor of the feel that the building will have. And the sense that as you come down a corridor in one of these wings, you'll have a view through the end of the wing, the end of the hallway into the tree canopy beyond. And very much the sense that you'll also have from most of the classroom views as well. And then we do have show some little plazas running between a couple of these areas where art classes could be held, a lot of various outdoor activities could take place as well. We do think that there may be some retaining walls required depending on how the grade terraces down. We know that that's going to have to be contended with. So we've started to illustrate some of those pieces as this is all being developed. As we were looking at the the site itself, really what's outlined in black here and in the upper left hand corner, you see Doherty Ferry Road, which is the primary access ingress and egress point for the campus. There will be a light and we'll show you in the next view here kind of how that lays out. But what's important to point out is that where this red dash line occurs and it kind of hooks a little bit down to the left from the midpoint. This is essentially the ridge line of the site. It's the high point and it helps us to orient the building, knowing that that is going to be sort of the high point of the site and that the primary east west axis runs more or less along that diagonal line. In the upper right hand corner, you see the flattest part of the site, which is kind of that kind of circular shape oblong up there. And we think that that's, excuse me, a good place to locate the playing field, sort of a small size soccer field, play field, since it's the most flat part of the site and it would lend itself well to orienting the field there. And then the building sort of acts as this diagonal spine within the wings as they step down into the the receding grades. Those wings terrace down from the building as well. So Jen, if you can switch to the site plan. You can see in the upper left hand area where the intersection is with the the stoplights there at Doherty Ferry. And then you'll come into the parking lot, which is and it really hasn't determined the been determined what's the best size. But where you see the yellow buses stacked up, we rail, we think probably that that's going to make more sense being the vehicular parent drop off in the in the morning and then the buses would likely stack up on the western edge of the building coming off of that fire lane so that you wouldn't have intermixing of buses and vehicles that kind of be flipped from what we're currently showing. But we try to separate the buses and parent vehicles as much as possible in the drop off and pickup. Then, so you see the primary entrance in the canopy right above there. And then that has a walkway, a pedestrian vertical access that comes up through the parking area and then connects to the sidewalk up along Doherty Ferry Road. So it will be the primary, both pedestrian and vehicle point. And I think it's important to note, we're looking at a treeed sort of canopy for traffic calming in that area. We'll have different pavement to slow that down just so that it makes that as accessible as possible. We don't have vehicles crossing as students come through into the building. Then, as I mentioned, on the northern side of the building, we have a number of the public components, which, starting from the right hand side, would likely be the gymnasium, the cafeteria, nurses' suite, administrative suite adjacent, and then potentially the media center on the far west end. These are all areas that can be accessed without, and and I should say, after hours, during hours, without having to go into the academic wings, which are the fingers that then come off to the south. And what could happen in this scenario is that the cafeteria and the gymnasium could be open for evening use to the community and have the remaining part of the building locked down and not have have to have that open and makes for a very convenient setup and takedown for after hours use. And from a safety perspective, the green spine that I referred to that runs along the backside of that component is the circulation getting to the academic wings. And that has the advantage of, again, from a safety and security standpoint, if there is a scenario at the front of the building, the there are doors into each of these academic wings, which can automatically be closed and locked down to secure the the academic wings from the remaining portion of the building and at any time. But again, then you see how these academic fingers come back in into the more heavily vegetated area of the site. And really, the whole perimeter is thought to be fairly densely wooded and that would continue. You do see some of the small trails going through the woods. Some of these are already established, others could be reestablished. There's the playfield in the upper right hand corner and then a larger playground next to that. And then we've been talking about potentially have us having a secondary playground and whether that's down in the southwest corner or more proximate to one of these other wings. We just haven't determined that as yet. We wanted to give you just a quick snapshot of some of the class, different types of classrooms that we've done in elementary schools recently. And I think the critical thing to acknowledge is that they're very flexible spaces. And whether they have little kivas built in for small group activity together or whether there are larger tables that can be put together for project related work. There's storage around the perimeter of the classrooms. Oftentimes casework is built in to house those. This classroom has direct access at grade to the outside. Sometimes that is achievable. Other times you might have to go through a hallway to a stair and then go down. But you get a sense for the flavor of what's being developed in the in the classroom, very flexible space that can serve a number of different functions. Again, another snapshot kind of showing, we always feel that daylight is incredibly important in elementary schools and daylight, fresh air, and it's it's just so important. And so you'll see that as much as possible, we try to bring light in through monitor windows, direct windows to the outside on several sides of the classroom as well. There are also secondary spaces oftentimes. We're seeing this as more of a trend that classrooms have the ability to break out into smaller groups and move into secondary, smaller group work areas. And those oftentimes are adjacent, but either are open to the classroom or have some sort of glazing so that the teacher can monitor both while in the classroom and yet supervise the small group activity that's going on outside as well. Again, sort of more of the same, some, we're seeing a lot of trapezoidal tables. I mean, I say that just as we go to the older configuration here. But we're using a lot of different types of furniture that is amazingly flexible. And they can be pushed and moved and reconfigured. And that's a huge trend that we're seeing in K-12 classrooms these days. Different storage and cubby lockers spread around the classroom. Sometimes they're project related, other times it's they're for personal use. It all depends on kind of what the curriculum is and how much project work is related. And you know, the STEM initiatives push in to, in some cases, in the elementaries, we see them, the STEM classrooms clustered together. In others, we've also seen a scenario where the STEM classrooms might be in their respective grade levels. This was actually a STEM classroom that was developed for Parkway. And this is kind of prototypical that they're putting into place in a number of their class in their elementary schools. This is a more traditional classroom. And oftentimes, there are water activities, sand and other play activities built into the room as well. In almost all cases, you see sinks within the classroom. And oftentimes, they can accommodate multiple students together. So this gives you a pretty good overview. Oftentimes, wayfinding is really critical. And we try to, as much as possible, identify classrooms and classroom pods with different colored sofas out in the hallways to help orient the kids. You just can't imagine a worse feeling than showing up at a school and not having any idea where you need to be and how to get there. And so these visual cues are really important to children throughout the their their year long dialogue and then knowing kind of where they're going in the next year. Oh yeah, we're going, you know, going to be at the the purple level. And we just find that use of color and materials can be so important in elementary schools and relating to kids and finding ways for them to connect in so many different ways. This is as a art classroom. It was one that we did in the new Barbara Jordan Elementary School a few years back. Media centers and libraries are taking on any number of different appeals these days. I mean, they they serve so many different functions. And we are finding kids are using them after hours, before hours. They're great places, kids oftentimes just don't want to leave. And they're just, they're wonderful places to be and they're exciting. And we really are designing those in many respects that sort of the hub of the school. And in some cases, classrooms pinwheel off of those. This one, for example, had a Kiva in it, a number of soft study areas. So we weren't So we weren't sure as yet, as we're working with the new elementary school, whether the media center would be two stories or one. It has the ability to be either going forward. And so we'll kind of get into that detail and look at it as, as the project is further developed. Again, media centers with also spill-out area, small group areas. Interesting one to note on the previous one, this was actually on the right-hand side, Jackson Park for University City, this was originally their gymnasium. And so utilizing that floor material and introducing some of these soffit clouds, brought it down to scale and made it much more acoustically appealing and worked out quite well as their media center in that case. Cafeterias, serving many different functions. And, you know, with, with stage backdrop, in some cases. And on to the next, different configurations, always well-lit and typically adjacent to play areas outside. And in some cases, laid out in a scenario where you could actually have the kids dine outside, depending on what the weather's doing and so forth. Then gym and multipurpose areas, this one really was a multipurpose room, not so much a gym, but used for a number of different, different functions. And then more traditional gym. And Mike, you had asked about, you know, the ability to have, we envision the gym as being the storm shelter in this particular configuration, just because it could house the entire school quite, quite easily. And you had asked, is there an ability to have windows? Yes, you can, in this particular case, and I think this is Cape Girardeau. We had to have storm shutters on those windows, but we did have daylight coming into that as well. This was Maplewood, Richmond Heights, you're in the gymnasium, looking through into the cafeteria beyond, which also has a hard surface curtain that closes off the backdrop for the stage behind. Somewhat similar in another, and then some small kiva areas outside of the classrooms. Tutorial and small group work can be done in these areas as well. And they take on many shapes and forms. Again, daylight from above. On the, in the Barbara Jordan image on the left, classrooms coming off of that wing, and then la due. And then you start to get into some of the administrative functions as well. And again, we try to carry through the themes of the colors and yet add a little bit flavor, a little bit different flavor to those. So that really, I'd love to entertain any questions that folks might have. I have kind of a number of different statistics for you, you know, about site coverage and things like that. And we can get into those, but I suspect you have more important questions to start.
Yeah, like, I'll make a statement and I'll open it up. First, you had a lot more detail this week. So thank you for, for, you know, adding some things, playground and some other things. But as I think about the curriculum and how our, our teachers and our staff and our students are accustomed to a certain rigor, the way this building lays out plays perfectly into the type of learning that I know our children are accustomed to. So thank you for working so hard to put that together. And any, any board members, if you have any questions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of peruse through and see if I see any hands raised, anybody who wants to ask first. Go right ahead. Jennifer, is that a hand raise?
That was, that was a very tentative hand raise. No, I, I echo what you just said about the detail. From what we saw last week, I really appreciate the emphasis on safety through, you know, just being in the building, the site, all of that. I think that that's really something that's important. And I also was curious if you could maybe talk a little bit more. You mentioned to be cognizant of the contours and lighting, right? And talking about vegetation and all of that, could you talk a little bit more? Because I know how much time you spent on that. It would be really nice to know just, you know, how much vegetation we can leave and the importance around that edge. That's it.
That's a great question. And honestly, that is kind of a huge part of what we were really focusing on in the early stages, as we looked at what would be the best configuration. Because if we, Jen, if we could go to the site plan. There you go. We have yet to do the tree survey, but that is going to be forthcoming. And that will help us to identify all of the specimen trees that are out on site. And what's interesting to note is that this was a grove at one time. And when, in the, I guess it was back in the 50s when it was farmed studded. And I don't know if it was an apple orchard or what the, there were a number of trees planted for fruit harvesting. And over the ensuing 50 years, things went fallow. And, but I think you've got some pretty neat specimen trees in here. And what our, our approach is to try to address the site from the inside out almost and try to, as much as possible, keep from touching the perimeter edges and really leave that as much as we can. And thin out kind of as you, you work your way from the outside in to the point that we need to do grading. And we do have detention basins in each of the lower right and left-hand corners, which are kind of low points in the site where water will naturally gather and then can be piped off. But water flow off the site is tremendous concern. And keeping the dense wooded areas is going to be really helpful in kind of maintaining that and helping us to channel the water to the detention basins and really keep the adjacent neighbors from seeing much of anything into the site. What's interesting to note is the house to the south, immediately to the south, which is, I think, probably the most proximate neighbor. That's a pretty steep climb on their site. And quite frankly, I think as, if one were to look from their house up, I don't believe that you would even see the ridgeline of the academic wings coming down to the south. Part of it due to the density of the wood, the wooded portion, which I think is even going to be more dense than what we show. I think it'll actually overhang the fire lane to a certain degree. But it's such a dramatic rise in elevation at that point. And everything will flatten out a good portion of it as you get onto our site. So that's something that we're going to be very cognizant of going forward.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I was, actually, that was one of my questions last week when we talked about that, the, the view from the neighbor and them being able to, to kind of have to look all the way up to see, you know, into the property.
I think it'll be pretty well, pretty well masked off, really, by the density of the woods there.
Art, could you talk a little bit about the amount of concrete and how, what efforts could be made to potentially slow runoff there?
Absolutely. And this was a question that had come up earlier too. And I think that in working with our civil folks, they've already expressed an interest in using pervious paving, whether it is pavers or pervious concrete through much of the site to retain the water and not have the watershed effect that so dramatically has impacted the region in the past. I think it's one of the tools that we'll use to, again, make sure that we're not shedding a lot of water from the site. And I think it's likely that much of the parking area is going to be comprised of that, which will allow the water to percolate down into the rock base below and then slowly seep through. And oftentimes, that's channeled at the perimeter limits and taken down into the storm detention basins, which then slowly dissipated as well. But I envision that probably the entire fire lane would be comprised of that. And we're looking at some other possible perv, plantable pavers as well in there. But then a lot of the area up at the northern part of the site would be that pervious paving.
Could you talk a little bit about how it will be determined, like what grade levels will be situated and what parts of the building? How is that usually done?
That will be done through a series of conferences with, with the teachers and, and staff to really look at how your curriculum is structured and what makes the most sense for, basically, what grade levels to be located in which wings. As we mentioned, sort of, does STEM go, get located with each of the grade levels? What are the auxiliary, you know, where is music going to be? Where are SSD classrooms going to be located? All of that curricular interaction has yet to be determined. And it's possible that these wings could morph quite a bit as a result of that. And this is kind of an initial first blush. But really, the curriculum will determine the shape of the back of the building and how this all comes together.
So do you envision, is that usually done with, like, committees, with teachers and parents and potentially community members?
It will be, yes, very much. I think, you know, I think the community will be interested in how the building is used and where students are going at various times in the day. I don't know that, I think the curricular side, and you, I'm sure have curriculum committees, that will help us focus on this comprised of the teachers from various subject matters and grade levels. And so that will take some very intensive study. And it will be a fairly long gestation period as we review what types of, what the classroom sizes are, does a 900-square-foot classroom make sense? Does it need to have small group tutorial adjacent to that? Are there science classrooms, STEM classrooms, proximate? What are the storage needs? Or are you doing a lot of project-related work? We'll really kind of get down into the very nitty-gritty aspects of what the needs are for both current curriculum and envisioned future curriculum too. Because I think it's important that everything has the appropriate flexibility to carry your, your curriculum into the future very much.
Mike, would you maybe talk again about the timeline for when, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jean Marie.
Are you, are you sure?
Yeah.
You're telling me good?
Yeah.
Okay. First, I, I just want to thank you for all of your work on this. I think that you have done a great job on this. And I really appreciate the fact that you have been very mindful of the neighbors surrounding this. Because I think it is one of our goals as a board and as a district that we are good neighbors to our neighbors. So one of the, one question that I do have, as the finger, the wings come out, is there access doors between wings? I was just thinking for, you know, for example, for, you know, special ed services, if a special ed classroom is in this first wing, but they're servicing a child in the third wing, can they get out the first wing and walk outside to get to the third wing?
Yes, in the, in the, when we've used a wing concept in the past, there has always been an ability to, to transition from one to another through a series of access points without disrupting classrooms or classroom suites in those as well. Whether it is, typically, it's, it's some sort of a hallway connection and/or has the stairwell in it as well. Because each of these would likely have a stairwell at the end of each. And, and that raises another point too, that we haven't talked about, is there will be perimeter fencing. And we don't know as yet where that would occur. Certainly, it'll occur around that, that sort of black border that you see around the perimeter. But there is likely going to be some secondary fencing as well to help with kind of student control by the teachers. And so it will be a safe area for you to be able to transition through there. And this whole area, we really see as kind of being the student safe area at the back of the building, if you will, out of traffic and so forth.
Okay, and then just one more thing, I, I think it's really important as we move forward. And I, this might be a district thing, that we kind of get feedback from our other school neighbors and kind of figure out, like, what are some of the things that have really worked for those neighbors and some things that maybe don't work for them, that, that we could possibly not repeat a problem if they, you know. So I would just encourage whoever's job that is to kind of get feedback from, you know, our existing school neighbors to make sure that we're getting that information. And let me look at my notes. Oh, the other piece that I really liked with this is, being a former teacher, the small workspaces off of your classroom is just so beneficial in so many ways. You can have an interventionist or an SSD service. You know, you can have small groups there where, you know, sometimes children, say if they're going to speech, they go down to the speech room, where maybe that service could be provided right there. And it cuts down in the track, you know, the time spent in between. And there's more time for service. So this is exciting stuff, and I really thank you guys a lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board before Michelle? You guys can go ahead and jump in if you get, if you have anything, Michelle, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask Mike Romei again to talk about when the timeline for when the school would potentially open. Because I know that, you know, right now, we're in the midst of coronavirus and responding to that and looking at the potential for some modifications to our, our schedule for next year. But when this does pass, and we know it will, we're going to have full classes again with kids and possibly more students, depending on how the economy.
and possibly more students, depending on how the economy affects, you know, the, the potential for added students. So Mike, if you could reveal again the timeline for when this could, the school could open?
Sure. We, our goal is to have it open for the 22, 23 school year. So two years from now is when the school would open. The, the building additions that are also included in Prop S will, will take one year. So, so we think we can have the additions on the other schools done for and ready for the 21, 22 school year. But this new, the, the new school on, off of Doherty Ferry, that will take two years. So we'll, we have all the pieces in place to kind of get started right away soon after the election. And so we would start the design work and, and meeting with those committees and to determine exactly, you know, what the new school should look like. But that process will, will likely take six months. And then we would bid it out and start construction as soon after. But a full two years to complete the building.
Thank you.
I gotta say, you guys have done a great job, very impressive. That outside, in between the, the wings and sort of fingers that come out, that area looks great to be able to have access to and our kids. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
If I could just mention, I had an opportunity to talk with Art and, and his team about the, the potential of how the space might be used, not only for play, but also to, as part of our curriculum. And I was very impressed. I mean, their questions were, were so smart. And it, it definitely gave me confidence that they saw the potential and how the space could be used at an element, as an elementary setting. But then when I saw the, the, the designs, as preliminary as they are, knowing that we still have many people to have their voice a part of this process and many teachers who can help us make it even better. But it, it felt very, as, as Art said, very organic. It's almost as if this, this school almost grows. It, it's almost grown on this land. That's the way it looks. And I think that there's so many neat options and potential for our kids to use the entire property, not just the school, the, the school building itself, but the entire property is a learning space.
Great point. Well, I thank you very much for the presentation. Dr. Kami, did you have anything else for us or we?
No, I don't. Just that we have a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on next Monday, the 18th at 7:00 PM. We really appreciate your hard work on this project. And you really listened to everyone's input. And, and you listened to the current concerns that we brought you from our neighbors and the importance that the, the building really looks like it belongs on the land that's there and is not something that is, looked like it would just, was just plopped on that space. So I really appreciate your, your listening skills and, and then the way that you can just creatively put all of that into a structure that really seems to fit on the space. I just, it's pretty amazing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say thanks also to Art and his team and then also to the team from Navigate. So it's, it's really exciting. We, we love the design work and can't wait to get started.
We can't wait as well. It'll be fun. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. You guys have a good day.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Talk to you guys later. Thanks. Bye, everyone.
Thanks, Darnell.